All right, Tom, you should be all set.
I'd like to talk about the PBD Planning Board meeting agenda for Thursday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM, PBD City Hall, lower level conference room, twenty-four Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. At this time, I'd like to suspend the regular meeting of the planning board and enter into a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning board of the city of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM at Wigan Auditorium, lower level conference room. To consider amending the zoning ordinance of the city of PBD as follows. Section one of the zoning ordinance map of the city of PBD entitled City of PBD Zoning Map adopted April twenty-eighth, two thousand eleven, as amended, is hereby further amended as follows. To redesignate the following parcels from residential R-two to central business B-C. Assessors map zero eight five parcel zero zero two H and number ten Monroe Street. Assessors map oh eighty-five parcel zero zero two one and number twelve Monroe Street. Section two, all audiences are part of this ordinance inconsistent here why here are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. Who's here to present?
I am.
Attorney Kelsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at forty Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts, and I appear on behalf of Ten Monroe, Ten Monroe Realty LLC of one oh eight Lyden Street, East Boston, Mass. They are the owners of the property, and as such, they are landowners affected by the zoning ordinance of the city of PBD and pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law forty forty-eight chapter five, they have standing as people affected by the zoning ordinance of the city of PBD, they have standing to be able to request a an amendment to the zoning. So as such, you may recall that this was a matter that had been before you a couple of months ago. You voted favorably. We're hopeful that you would do that once again this evening. We went from planning board a couple of months ago to city council. We were in subcommittee with a couple of other matters, and the other matter that was principally being focused upon at the time was changes to the overlay district, the mill overlay district, and some of that language. At the end of the subcommittee meeting, there was a vote on whether or not the subcommittee would vote favorably on this particular zone change, and that vote failed. When that vote failed, it got reported out of committee that it did not get a favorable vote, and the public hearing held by the city council on this matter was not even held. As such, one of the members of the subcommittee apparently suggested that there was some confusion that evening, and they had would vote favorably. And so, looking at the law, if you get a favorable report from the planning board, you can come right back without waiting any significant period of time. And there is a question of whether or not we even had to come here, but in the interest of time, and we decided we would come back here, fully hold a new public hearing, advertise it as such, and that's why we're here this evening, and the city council will have its hearing next week. Thank you. We're hopeful that you would vote favorably on this matter this evening.
Okay, do we have any questions from members of the board? Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this? Hearing none. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none. At this time, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board recommend to the city council that it adopt an amendment to the zoning ordinance to redesignate ten Monroe Street and twelve Monroe Street in PBD. Assessors map parcels eighty-five two A and two I from residential R-two to central business B-C.
We have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Dr. Otto, unanimous. Thank you. This time, we're in the public hearing and re and continue on with the meeting of the planning board. First item of business is approval of the minutes of the June first two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the four three minutes of the June one twenty twenty treaty planning board meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. A and R in Land Court are none on the agenda. Site building permit plan one Newbury Street.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I spoke this this week with the applicant engineer from one Newbury Street. They have provided to where they were provided that third-party reviews, and then they have since commented on those third-party reviews which you have in front of you this evening, hard copies of their responses to the stormwater and traffic reviews. They have since revised plans based upon these reviews and have submitted them to the Department of Public Services engineer Bob Langley to review those plans with hopes of getting a closeout memo and providing everybody with these finalized plans if any changes are to be made for your July twentieth meeting. So they have asked for a continuance, and they submitted a letter today, which I believe is in your hard copy packets. I think it's on the left side, the solely engineering one.
I have the letter here, and it says the comments made at peer review time, and they're looking to have us determine.
They asked for continuation until the July twentieth, twenty twenty-three planning board meeting.
All right, I'll accept the motion for that. We need a motion.
Yeah, accepted at the get first. Accept it, and then you'd have to have a motion to accept it.
Move to accept the letter dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three from solely engineering to Andrew Levin, senior planner, requesting that the matter of one Newbury Street be continued to the July twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Next item on the agenda is Zero Prospect Street.
That was just a motion to accept. Mr. Chairman, I further move to grant a request of solely engineering to continue the matter one Newbury Street to the July twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Next item on the agenda is Zero Prospect Street.
Mr. Chairman, again, this is an application they presented at your last meeting or a few meetings ago. They are currently undergoing and in talks with the engineering department about third-party reviews to take place. I believe attorney Anklis provided a letter of request for continuance in that in your packets as well, so they are looking to continue as well to a other meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move to receive a letter dated June eighth, twenty twenty-three from David Anklis, that's for to Andrew Levin, senior planner, requesting that the matter of zero. I suppose Marriott, as it states in the letter, be continued to our well, they don't, they don't, he's not asking for a date, so just move to receive his letter and.
Continue action.
It's continue action.
Continue action.
I would just do it, continue to the next meeting, and then I'll respond to.
Continue to July twentieth, twenty-three meeting.
Do we have a second?
What do we see to the?
I believe that that came in in time for the packets, correct?
Yes.
But you don't need to actually receive that. You just need to vote to approve the continuance.
Second, we vote to continue.
Needs to be a.
Okay.
You gotta do all in favor first for the.
All in favor? Unanimous. Andrew, do we receive this letter from Petula on that from the?
You can receive it into the record, but it's I.
Receive it into the record?
Yeah, you can make a vote to accept that. There's a there's a letter in your packet. It came in before the last meeting, so it was put into this packet, but it is a neighbor of budding the proposed Marriott, and she has provided a letter, I believe, in opposition to the project, and I've provided that has been provided in your packets. You guys want to wish to vote to accept that into the record?
Accept it into the record.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board accept the memo or letter from Petula, Patalaya Hortons, to Andrew Levin, dated June first, twenty twenty-three, regarding the Marriott proposal.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Next item on the agenda is fifty-four Prospect Street. Everyone?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just before the applicant begins, I will explain that the applicant and their team came in front of the construction review committee meeting yesterday. Supposed to be one week prior, a meeting conflict came up, so they met with the construction review committee yesterday. They discussed this project with representatives from the Health Department, Building, Police, and PMLP, as long as Community Development. I they'll probably explain as well, but engineering was unable to make it, but they have since talked with the applicants and are discussing review of the project and that as well. Just before the applicant continues, I will say that at the construction review committee meeting, Randy Sukney, on behalf of the Health Department, provided the applicant with a memo in person, but he's also submitted a memo to the board as well that was provided in your packets. It is the plan review for Sharon Cameron and Randy Sukney. I will also say that since that review meeting as well, we have received this evening a memo from the Historic Commission as well, if you wish to receive that and add that to the record as well in regards to the project.
We have to receive the memo from the Health Department?
Both are laid out, so you can decide to receive them this meeting or the correspondence for the next meeting.
The chairman moved to receive a memorandum dated June sixth, twenty twenty-three from Sharon Cameron, Sharon Cameron and Randy Sukney of the PBD Department of Health and Human Services regarding the fifty-four Prospect Street project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Dr. Otto, unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, I also move that the board receive a memorandum dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three from the PBD Historic Commission, Lisa Green, also concerning the fifty-four Prospect Street project.
There was a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Kelsey?
Yes, sir.
Anything you have fifty-four prospects?
I do. This was reading the Historic Commission memorandum. I I'm John Kelty. I have I've an attorney. I have offices at forty Lowell Street here in PBD. I'm appearing on behalf of David Lemieux, who is the owner of property at fifty fifty-four Prospect Street, and this is a project that was previously approved in a different form. Originally, when we were here, it was a five-building project. It's now a three-building project. It was thirty-six units. It's now twenty-six. There were one and two bedrooms. We're now all two bedrooms. There were eighty-six spaces. We now have twenty-six spaces, parking spaces. All of these issues bring us keep us in compliance with zoning. We have reduced with this iteration impervious surface by twelve hundred square feet, and that has allowed us to add green space and to increase the snow storage capacity. The ways that are taking you through this project are now twenty-two feet wide, and they were twenty, and we've begun I've placed an application in the hands of the Community Development Department for affordable. We will be required to construct four units. There is an hopeful discussion next week about perhaps doing the affordables offsite, but that's that's we understand we've got to participate, and we we will be participating in the program. And I've also had occasion, as Andrew has stated earlier, I've had occasion to speak with Bob Langley to discuss peer review in as much as this is a project that's gone through. We just want to make sure that our peer review consultants are perhaps the same people so that we're not reinventing the wheel. It'll look familiar to them, and they can look at the issues of change and but our grading, although and where our water goes, where our stormwater goes is all the same. We will be reducing any amount of money that is necessary in the I and I participation program because we're reducing our sewer. And Mr. Roland Lemieux was here this evening, and also Craig Marchanda, who is the author of the plans, and Craig is happy to do a presentation this evening. Those were the highlights, and if you want to.
I have the plan. If you'd like me to share it so everyone can see.
That'd be great.
Copy the juice. Under these, she started out on my sheet four, the light material, with a general.
We just moved the plan over here so everyone can see it. Is that big enough for everyone? Said sheet four. Yes.
I could even mention Craig Marchanda, Jack mentioned, and Jack covered, as he said, most of the highlights. I don't have a whole lot to add, really. But this project is unique as you've seen a very similar version of it a few years ago. In that Jack mentioned, biggest highlights are reducing or increasing the drive widths by two feet, reducing our proposed impervious with respect to previously approved plan by about twelve hundred square feet. And we've made no reduction in our stormwater management system due to the reduction in impervious. We left it as previously designed. As you know, should be a little bit extra now, and as Jack, I think Jack also mentioned, we have more green space now as we have less buildings. So we were able to increase our snow storage, as we know that was a pretty pretty big concern last time around. Otherwise, the project is very similar to what we had before. We're going to be coming in off Prospect Street with a entrance slash exit on the kind of the plan right side there, then further left will have a right exit only. And we've reduced parking accordingly due to the change in the unit mix to now have all two bedroom units. And it's important to probably note that in our parking calculations, we did not include the two spaces near the dumpster area. Those are for maintenance personnel only, as well as the six spaces in front of the existing duplex on the southern corner of the site there. Parking calculations. Utilities will be coming from Prospect Street, same as before. Stormwater, all those to a recharge system in the back, which is shown on the following sheet, sheet five, if anybody wants to see that. It's perfect. Thank you. Right behind that building number three at the top of the sheet there is where stormwater management system is. And site, we will have a gas electric sewer wire, all the all the typical players. Everything's coming from Prospect Street. The water will be looping out just as it was before through the city's request. And yeah, I don't really have much to add. I think it's very similar to last time, but I do think the site is better. It's more space. The accessways are as they're widened. We didn't reduce the curb radii, so navigating this development should be easier than originally approved. And I think it looks like a good site. As part of our meeting yesterday, we did talk about trying to enhance the landscaping a bit, particularly at the kind of plan left end of the drive in front of building three, as well as a little bit closer to the dumpster, and possibly a little bit more in the front right corner of the site there, beside building number two, as we don't have that little short section of road anymore. We originally had. Otherwise, our landscape and lighting will be the same, the style, the same, on the same criteria. And we will be.
I don't believe I have the architecturals.
Our our plan should have the landscape and lighting plans again, but we don't I don't have the architectural renderings on our M S P F file.
No, I can stop sharing, though, and if you want to present those, the camera will actually just pick you up.
This is the rendering that Bill Nolan had given us there, the same type and style of unit that was being proposed previously, where at a smaller scale. They are garage under the against Bill has given us renderings from our different angles, different viewpoints. I'm happy to actually submit this tonight and make it part of your file for the record.
Get a digital copy, too, when you have a second of those.
Absolutely. Do we have one? He must be able to.
I can get one if you don't already.
All right.
I don't know.
Submit that.
Greatest, but I can I can request it.
Okay.
But not share.
You want this one or no?
Yes, the board want to accept that for the record?
I mean, it will send it to you digitally, too. But I think it'll be good to have a hard copy for our record.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, move that the board receive architectural renderings of the North Point residences, project fifty to fifty-four Prospect Street, planned dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor?
Any questions for the board? Are you going to recoup the continuance on this?
Oh, yes.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apartments and condos? I don't think I heard. Apartments, thank you. Do all twenty-six units have one garage, one garage bay, and then the space in the driveway in front of that same area?
Yes.
Yeah, I I see it like every single thing seems to be an improvement, and it was approved before, so. Seems logical to me.
We did have comments from the at the construction review committee yesterday. We did have comments from PMLP representative at that meeting, and he pointed out how where our power is likely to come from. There'd be a discussion about the riser, and then everything would be underground thereafter. And so we know what direction the PMLP is pointing us in.
It's I I guess it's it's a bit of a formality. It seems a little bit odd that they they got to approach all the peer reviews again, where there's going to be less water, less sewer, more impervious area. So I don't know. Hopefully, it's just a quick review and end of story.
That's what we're hoping.
All right. Thank you.
If you go to the monument issue?
Yes.
Have you given any consideration to how you're going to deal with it?
We just got that memo just now, and that says they'd like us to work with them rather than relocating it, or if we are, I think it also says that they're not favorable to relocating it, but because the stone, you know, how are we going to move it? And they wish to be on record. They cannot support it until more information is received and review of the plan move has been conducted and approved. So we'll provide detail to the commission as to how that'll be done.
I can just provide some clarity to that. On the plan, if you look, there's a section, there's a historic monument out there right now in regards to the first school teacher, as it's mentioned in the city of PBD. I had reached out to Lisa Green, who is the clerk for the Historic Commission, just to let her know, because I didn't under know if that was actually part of the historic society or not. She then forwarded these plans yesterday to the Historic Commission, and then she received this letter. And so this is, you know, the letter came in less than like an hour and a half ago, so this is the first time we're seeing it, and they're seeing it as well. So and then speaking briefly with Lisa, I believe they just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page as what's happening.
Just to follow up to attorney, when I do you see any issues with finding an amicable solution to that?
I don't.
Okay.
No, I certainly don't.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, I'm sure once we connect them with some plans and more details, if they have any other questions concerned, we can work with them.
I'm sure that there's there should be some reasonable way to 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 keep that historical.
She was PBD's first teacher.
Yeah, certainly understand why they don't want to. They better see what we want to do.
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
I saw a TV show the other night about moving the gatehead light a hundred and eighty-five feet. They've moved that. We can move this rock safely.
Are you going to request?
Yes, we would ask this matter be continued. Your next meeting is July twenty.
We skip on we skip one.
Right. We ask to be continued into that meeting, and hopefully we have our peer reviews looked at back, whatever. But we can report to you at that date, and we'll work on our agreement with the Historical Commission.
At this time, I'll accept the motion for that. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve a request to continue the matter fifty-four Prospect Street for the fourth fixed meeting on July twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, do you want those people?
Next item on the agenda is appointments. Have none. Subdivision board action, none. Anybody have any comments on the correspondence listed, one through seven? Every none, city council, none. Other matters properly before the board.
Just, Mr. Chair, just again to mention to everybody, we have, I think it's going to be a busy next few months with the planning board, so I just ask them if you have anything that you know of, letting us know as soon as possible, if you will be able to make or not be able to make a meeting would be greatly appreciated.
You're going to still be able to go on Zoom, too. It's still going to be an auction?
Yeah.
It's not going to be like.
I'd have to look more into what the state is. I know they were debating it, but I think they extended. They're trying to make it permanent, I believe, the the hybrid thing, so I think they should still be able to.
Any other matters properly before the board? If none, I would accept the motion.
Chairman, motion adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
One second.
Again, thank you very much, everyone, for your time and effort.
Thanks, I have.
Thanks for having me.